Sure.
All right. Okay, then I'll call the meeting to order. So let's see. Okay, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners, held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is September 9th, 2020. Due to social distancing guidelines and regulations imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on gatherings of 25 or more people, this meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conference platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment were made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
You're moved.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Say nay, aye. Okay, ayes have it, please record unanimously. Okay, and we are short. One board member, Jonathan Cobb, is at his wedding tonight. And we have substitute professionals. Okay. And one short announcement, due to limitations to the size of indoor public gatherings, all regular and special meetings of the Board of Commissioners and Township Advisory Boards will continue to occur virtually using the Zoom video conferencing platform until further notice. Meeting details and instructions on how to access meetings can be found on the township's web, which is www.springfieldmonco.org. Okay, so now the board is open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. And what we've been doing is soliciting people's comments or questions by email. Did we have any emails this time?
We did not.
No, okay. So now we can, if anybody on the call has a question, we are willing to entertain questions or comments from the floor.
Mr. President, if I may, if any member of the public wishes to make a comment to the board, we do ask that you use the raise your hand feature, which can be located at the bottom of your screen or by clicking Participants and clicking the Raise Your Hand button. And we do have Dr. Brown, Mr. President.
Okay, okay, Dr. Brown. Go right ahead.
Yes, my name is, for some reason, I can't show my face. I don't know why.
Dr. Brown, we don't allow video.
Oh, okay, all right, fine. So at any rate, my name is Dr. Craig Brown. I'm the president of Sheltonham Area NAACP, which includes Springfield, Jenkentown, Sheltonham, of course, a few other townships. And just interested in what's going on in Springfield. We understand there's some issues. And I saw an article written. So I'm here to find out how we can assist, especially Commissioner Graham, who is a member of our branch, and overcoming whatever difficulties and lend assistance to resolve any issues that are present or presently within the township. So pardon my voice, I've had a long, long day.
Well, thanks, thanks for coming. So I can tell you, we've had long discussions about some of this stuff last night at our workshop. And what I can tell you about what we, I wouldn't say resolved, but what we discussed at our workshop, which may or may not be everything you want to hear about. But the one thing that we're moving ahead with is, you know, Commissioner Graham, Commissioner Lee are going to put together a, some sort of a forum. And I'm not sure, they're in charge of this, so I'm sort of staying out of it. But some sort of a forum or a series of meetings, or maybe, I don't know. But what we're going to do is basically establish a protocol for better police transparency, getting complaints heard, and comments and that sort of thing. And things along those lines. But I guess, and also having things posted on websites so that people better understand, you know, what sort of training the police are getting in terms of, you know, sensitivity and, you know, that sort of thing. So that's in the offing. And then beyond that, we also talk about, in broader terms, kind of putting together a human relations committee or something like that. And what I can tell you is that we've actually have a human relations committee, but it was actually formed, it was like four or five years ago, with specific reference to an ordinance that we put together in support of the LBGHT community. And it had to do with, you know, hearing specific complaints. Unfortunately, it didn't go very far because, you know, at that time, we had a board that was sort of politically split. And so, you know, it just didn't, sort of, didn't pass, didn't pass the, you know, getting the votes to continue. But we have the ordinance in place. And so we're gonna examine that and see how we can expand that to incorporate and encompass some of these other things that we're thinking about. And by the way, we're, you know, we welcome your assistance. And I'm sure you'll be talking to Commissioner Graham about this and Commissioner Lee. And, you know, so we welcome you and your insight.
Well, that's good to hear. Commissioner Graham doesn't know this, but today, the Monco Branch Presidents of the NAACP met with Commissioners Val Arquish and Ken Lawrence. And we had Monco DA Kevin Steele on the call. And we're going to be having, at some point, reaching out, if it hasn't done already, DA Steele, reaching out to your police chief in reference to a video showing called Walking While Black, a very impactful movie. And we haven't worked out the logistics, but we certainly would like to make sure that your police chief and other top officials in your police department will be in the video audience because we won't be doing this in a theater. And at some point, we're hoping to show the movie and subsequent meetings to the local commissioners of each of our townships, like in Sheltonham, Springfield, et cetera. So thank you for that information. And we are certainly supportive of all efforts because we all have to live together, work together. And we want to see every person in our local branch communities have the ability to live out the American dreams. And just as one more point, if you don't know too much about the NAACP, there, we have a local website, there's a state website, and then there's a national website. So if you want more information, please visit those websites. Thank you for your allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Hey, see, two other hands raised. Let me see, I can't, oh, Chad Lassiter, okay. Mr. Lassiter, go ahead.
Hi, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very great. Thank you for allowing this brief space. I want to once again say good evening to all the Commissioners. And I'm glad to be in this space with Dr. Brown of the NAACP. Hope that you're doing good, Dr. Brown. I think we all can reach consensus between our voices and our eyes that we're probably all tired because there are multiple hats that we wear. Just really briefly, I want to just share that I'm here in the capacity of not just the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, but also a dear colleague to the NAACP and to Eddie Graham, and also to lend my intellectual property and my expertise, also my willingness to listen and to learn about how we can just work together in a collaborative with regards to some of the presenting challenges that have occurred in your township. And I say presenting because I don't come to this space assuming that they're deeply rooted or that they have some historical trajectory that leaves the historical and bring it into the contemporary. But I also want to share how, over the past two years, your colleague Eddie Graham has been instrumental in a lot of the work that I've attempted to do and that I am doing at the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, and specifically in addressing antisemitism in the state. It was because of Eddie Graham that AG Shapiro and myself held a event entitled Combating Antisemitism and Racism in the Commonwealth. And this was held at my dear friend Reverend Marshall Mitchell's church, Salem Baptist Church, attended by about 300 people. And so I come to this space this evening just standing in solidarity with all of you as Commissioners, but also be very transparent that I was also somewhat alarmed by a Facebook post in which a person used some disparaging comments with regards to Commissioner Graham. I think we live in a society where we can disagree with people and have ideological differences. You have African Americans who are supporters of Trump, and I think that's okay. You have people who will attend a same-sex marriage, I think that's okay. You have people who may not attend a same-sex marriage, and that's okay. You have people who will let antisemitism jokes go by the wayside. And then there are others of us who will say, well, because the person's last name is not Kaplan, Stern, Berkowitz, Lippman, I'm going to stand up against antisemitism. And so I just want to simply say that I think that whatever the challenges are, and I don't come, once again, to the context, Commissioners, with a narrative that was given to me by anyone. I believe that there are three sides of every story. You all have a side, the community may have a side, and somewhere in lies the truth. And I think by being Commissioners, and I'm fully aware of the roles of Commissioners, I sat on the Board of Trustees for eight years for the Philadelphia prison system under Mayor Michael Nutter. I sat on the Board of Trustees Community College of Philadelphia for six years. And I'm currently on the Board of Governors for St. Christopher's Hospital for Children. So I give that as context because, you know, the roles of Commissioners, the roles of just human beings is very, very challenging when we're juggling so much against the backdrop of this pandemic, this economic collapse, what political scientists are calling a crisis of legitimacy, not to mention the persistent antisemitism, xenophobia towards our Asian-American Pacific auditor colleagues. Also, you know, the transphobia that we're seeing, the attacks on LGBT community. And then, not to put it last or dismiss it, but the white nationalism that we see where Kyle Rittenhouse can actually be called a 17-year-old person and is almost like journalistic malpractice, not to call him a white supremacist, and then a killing by some police officers of black unarmed people. And so I just want to simply say, I saw a post on Facebook as well where Commissioner Graham was called a race hustler. And words have meanings, right? And so from an ethnic intimidation and racial intimidation perspective, you know, I just think that we have to get a solidarity message out where there is standardization and uniformity and a message that those type of things won't be tolerated from anyone, right? You know, in Philadelphia County, I'm concerned when we say Black Lives Matter, but yet, you know, in various communities, blacks are dying at the hands of other African-Americans because of gun violence. Not dismissing all those things Dr. Brown and several of you on this call know about. And Dr. Brown and Eddie and I talk about those things as well, educational apartheid, you know, economic injustice, environmental racism, white supremacy, institutional racism, the lack of moral compass, moral imperative, a lack of fathers in homes. But we still have to make sure that those of us who are called to serve, we do it in a civil manner. And so I was very concerned. I think Commissioner Graham probably knows the Facebook post, you know, verbatim, but I think it was like he was called a piece of S H I T. As a man of faith, I found that very offensive. Just like in our American democracy, if black police officers were killing white unarmed males and getting off with impunity, I would be screaming White Lives Matter. I would be out there lending my expertise, my life as a vehicle to alleviate the suffering of all humanity. The last thing I wanted to simply say, Commissioners, is that I don't want to underscore the before-mentioned statement, which I think that there needs to be some standardization and uniformity as it relates to a statement where you have a commissioner who's being attacked. And I'm not talking about your private meetings and ideological, you know, struggles that you all may have internally, but externally. I just really feel as though that the moment that we're in, we have to be very careful that it doesn't get volatile. And I'll end by simply saying, there was a white nationalist in Central PA yesterday. This came on my radar from the Governor's Office, where this person has spray painted and vandalized a building where he said, "Trump 2020, F. Black Lives Matter, White Pride." As a national expert on race relations and as a former professor of race relations at University of Penn, I quickly unpackaged that. He has every right to say Trump 2020. There's nothing fundamentally wrong with that. But when we start saying F. Black Lives Matter, that's a problem. And when we start saying white pride, that's, that's, no, white power, excuse me, that's a problem. Because I would switch out white power with white pride. It's okay to have a strong ethnic and racial identity. It's okay to be white. It's okay to be from Czechoslovakia, but we can't engage in a form of superiority. So I think that words matter. Words have a polarizing and racialized effect. And I'm hoping that on either side of the color line, the gender line, that there could be a civil discourse that won't lead to calling people a piece of S H I T or race hustlers and things of that nature. When I see Eddie Graham, I don't see him chasing after, and these are just my comments here. This is not representative of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. I don't see Eddie Graham chasing after racial incidents in the same manner nationally that I see Al Sharpton or Jesse Jackson. I see Eddie Graham strengthening relationships. And as I end, in the same manner that Martin Luther King Jr. and the great Rabbi Abraham Yeshua Heschel did, creating a beloved community. Doesn't mean that I always agree with everything that Eddie Graham says, you know. It doesn't mean that Eddie Graham agrees with everything that I say. But we can have a civil discourse in a way that Ben Franklin asked us to, to come to the context civilly. We can disagree, but we can be civil in doing so. Commissioners, thank you so much. I'm not going to be here for the entire evening, but I just want to say God bless each of you. And I'm here from a PHRC perspective to help with unconscious bias training or anything you need, you know, revamping your HRC. We can help you with your Ortons, anything that you need from us. We stand committed to help this community.
Thank you, Mr. Lassiter. Your words are well said. And Commissioner Graham, do you want to respond?
Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to thank my good friends, Dr. Brown, and to my brother and the Lord, Chad Lassiter. God placed him on my path many years ago. And we have had many discussions that have lasted long into the night. I really appreciate the support that both of you bring to me in addressing this situation. And I just really, I just wanted to admit that I was really emotionally drained and hurt that I had to carry that burden of being called a race agitator and a race hustler. But after praying about it and thinking, why this happened, I began to realize that I will proudly carry that burden and proudly accept that mantle, as you can see by my shirt that says, "Race hustler hustling for justice since 1974", which was true when I first went up to Penn State as a member of the Black Student Union. But I don't carry that burden alone. As a man of faith, I know that my Heavenly Father helps to lift that burden off my shoulders and also to my support team with Dr. Brown and Chad and to everyone else that came tonight, but also to the letters of support and encouragement that I received from so many of our residents that helped me both emotionally and spiritually. But that burden is no heavier than the burden of what my ancestors carried before me to allow me to even live in Springfield and to be a member of this board. And I will not betray their sacrifices, their lives, even their deaths in addressing issues that bring about racial harmony here in Springfield. Because in reality, that's all I'm really trying to do. If one section of our community is being persecuted, I will lift my voice for that community. If Jewish children within our community were being persecuted because of their religion, I would raise my voice for that Jewish community. If any gay or transgender community person within Springfield was being persecuted, I would raise my voice for that community. If any Asian-American that was being persecuted here in Springfield, I would raise my voice for that community. Because if one suffers in our community, we are all suffering. And what I've been observing is that systematic racism is so American that when you protest against it, people actually think you are protesting against America or that you're a race hustler, what they're calling me, that I'm accepting, that are causing these issues within the community. And I proudly say that these same accusations were made to Dr. King, to Elhaj Malika Elshabazz, Rosa Park, Megan Evers, James Baldwin, Fannie Lou Hammer, A. Philip Randolph, Banyard Ruston, just to name a few. And while we're out here playing these political games, we have to realize that children's and children's lives are forever being altered for the work. So I realize that we can't fix racism. But what we can do is take steps to mitigate the impact. And that's why I focused our discussions at these town hall meetings on tactics relevant to reducing the impact of racism within policing. One of the first steps any organization takes after a race issue is diversity training. You try to change how people think, or at least how they approach a situation. Police departments have also gone a step further by using implemented implicit bias training. And I'm happy and proud to say that our Chief of Police Pitco and the entire Springfield Police Department has taken steps toward that goal. But that requires that the Police Department and this Board of Commissioners work cooperatively with all the people in our neighborhoods. But that only works if the officers can connect with the community and gain a circle of trust of community members. And this is the only message that my meetings and my outreach has been trying to do. It calls for an uncomfortable conversation, but that needs to be had. And I'm committed to making that happen so that every resident in Springfield Township can have a positive relationship with our Police Department. And let's be honest, real discomfort is the only way to bring about real change. Dr. King once said that the ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moment of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at the time of challenge and controversies. And I plan to stand as those that taught this that came before me. So I hope that all of you can come to our follow-up meeting next Wednesday on the 16th at 7:00 PM. And thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to have these few words. Thank you.
Thank you, well said.
Hey, Barrett. Before we go on, I'd just like to address Mr. Lassiter. I was the one who wrote our nondiscrimination ordinance many years ago. And we were really tied knots on how to do it because we took a different approach. And I was working with Equality PA, and they sent me over to your agency. And they were wonderful. They explained it to us in a way that let us take a different approach that I think was much simpler and much more empowering. I don't remember who I worked with, but it really was a breakthrough for us and got us over a lot of the obstacles. So I know you're there for us, but you certainly were there for us whenever that was, eight or 10 years ago. So thank you. And hello, Dr. Brooks, I look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, everyone. How are you this evening? I hope this message finds you fine. I truly appreciate you inviting me to your platform this evening. And as an educator, I can sincerely say I've been taken back to school on the conversation that has gone before me. My question this evening, well, question, but more as to a question to the Commissioners and to this Board. Prior to COVID, I was interviewed and accepted to the Library Committee. I did receive one correspondence from Springfield stating that. However, since that time, I have received no correspondence. And my question is, has the Library Committee been put on hold because of COVID? Are they having meetings?
We have not met. We have not met since you were added to the Board, but you still should be getting the emails that say we haven't met. So Mike, can you fix that?
I can, I'll let Mary Catherine know. She's the staff liaison.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate that.
And I look forward to that. And wait till you hear who we're adding to it tonight. We've got an all-star we're adding to our already good team.
Okay, I look forward to that. Thank you very much. I truly appreciate being given these few moments to share that information and share my concern. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you, Doctor. All right. So I don't see any other hands up, I don't think. So seeing none, then I'll move on to the committee reports. And I don't have any, I don't have anything to say myself. So I'll move on to the Chairman of our Internal Affairs and Library Committee, Commissioner Harbison.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda is the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the August check reconciliation in the amount of $503,398.42 and the September bill listing in the amount of $559,388.06. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any questions on the motion? Any questions on the motion? No. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the budget meeting schedule. We will be meeting with the support agencies, fire, ambulance, planning on Tuesday, September 15th at 7:00. We will have our budget workshop on Wednesday, October 21st at 7:00. The budget will be presented at our business meeting in November, which is Wednesday, November 11th at 7:30. The budget hearing will be at our business meeting in December. That would be December 9th, Wednesday at 7:30. And the adoption would also be that evening. The meetings will all be held by the Zoom virtual meeting platform unless something changes between now and then.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution 1501. The Board of Commissioners has the statutory obligation to adopt a resolution setting forth the minimum municipal obligations to properly fund the three township pension plans and incorporate the minimum municipal obligations into the succeeding year township budget. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 1501, a resolution establishing 2021 Pension Fund Minimum Municipal Obligations. That is my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, thank you. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. The next item, item four, is Township Auditors. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint B. Bergvoll and Company, sir.
certified public accountants to serve as the Springfield Township Auditors to audit the township's financial statements for the year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty, consistent with the audit engagement letter dated August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. The cost of the engagement is twenty-three thousand dollars, which is the same as was charged in two thousand nineteen. That is my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thanks. Uh, any questions on the motion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Did I get a nay on that one? Was it unanimous? Okay. Please record a unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item five, Township Engineer. Undercover letter of September second, twenty twenty, the township's appointed engineer, Mark W. Isold, P E, indicated that he would be leaving his current firm in order to accept the position as the Director of Municipal Engineering for Carroll Engineering Corporation. Mr. Isold has served as the Township Engineer since nineteen ninety-eight and was most recently appointed by the Board of Commissioners in January twenty twenty. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners confirm the appointment of Mark W. Isold, P E, of Carroll Engineering Corporation to serve as Township Engineer. Is that a motion? Um, yes, that is my motion.
Hey, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And then finally, we have item six, the Library Advisory Committee. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Adam Hess of Flower Town, Pennsylvania, to serve as an alternate member of the Library Advisory Committee. Mr. Hess's term of service shall expire on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Hess presently serves as the Director of the Landman Library at Arcadia University and earned his Master's of Library Science from Louisiana State University. That is my motion.
Thank you. Uh, do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
And thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
It went quiet. Are we back, back to me?
Yeah.
If we're back to me, that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thanks. Okay. Yeah, you're, sometimes you're, you're kind of fading in and out a little bit.
Yeah, I don't have a great signal out here in my barn. Sorry.
That's okay. Okay. Uh, moving on, let me see. Uh, to, we'll hear from the Chairman of our Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the recycling report during the month of July twenty twenty, Springfield Township residents recyc- recycled two hundred and twenty-eight point oh-five tons of material with a householder participation rate of eighty-one point four percent. The net cost for the month was twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. I have a resolution, Resolution one five oh-two, and by way of background, the, the recycling agreement maintained by the Montgomery County Recycling Consortium for the processing of recycled recyclable materials is expiring on or about October the thirty-first, twenty twenty. And it is the desire of the seven communities participating in the consortium to extend the agreement for up to six months in order to consider alternatives for the future collection and disposal of recyclables. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution fifteen oh-two, a resolution authorizing the extension of recycling services with J. P. Mascaro and Sons dated October twenty-two, twenty fifteen, for an additional period of six months or up to six months. That is my motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions on the motion?
I, I don't have a question, but I just want to make an observation, and I think the public should understand that, uh, you know, because of the very difficult recycling, um, environment that we're in now, that this is, uh, that with the, with the ending of our first contract, uh, we're going to be responsible for a lot more recycling costs than we had in the past. In fact, uh, per our discussion on, well, last night, uh, our recycling costs at this, under this new arrangement, this new contract, uh, could well exceed our cost for the disposal of trash. In other words, it's going to cost Springfield Township residents more to recycle than it is to just, just to throw away their trash. So that's just a personal observation.
Any easier? Okay. Um, that concludes your report?
You need a vote on that vote.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second. Commissioner Graham, second again.
I'm sorry about that. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on then to, um, uh, the Chairman of our Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have one announcement and one motion. Uh, the announcement is in an email dated August the thirty-first, twenty twenty. Chris Tomlinson of Flower Town announced that his family would be relocating from Springfield Township and that it would be necessary for him to resign his position as a member of the Springfield Township Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. The Board of Commissioner thanks Mr. Tomlinson for donating his time and talents to the Springfield Township community. As a result of Mr. Tomlinson's resignation, there presently exists a vacancy as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee advises the Board of Commissioners on the goals and objectives of the township's park and recreation programs and serves as a sounding board for the recreational needs of our residents. If you are interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee or any other advisory commission, the Board of Commissioners would like to hear from you. So please forward a letter of interest or resume to the attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager, fifteen-ten Paper Mill Road, Windmore, P A, one nine oh-three-eight, or to Mike M. Taylor, I'm sorry, let me start that all over again, M. Taylor, at Springfield Montco dot org in order to be considered for an appointment. Um, that is the announcement. Uh, secondly, I have a motion concerning Resolution number fifteen oh-three. The Board of Commissioners of Montgomery County has awarded a Montco twenty forty implementation grant in the amount of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred dollars in order to complete the project known as the Mermaid Park Stream and Habitat Restoration Project. The Montgomery County grant requires a local match in the amount of forty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars that can be provided utilizing other grant sources. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number fifteen oh-three, a resolution authorizing application to the Pico Green Region Open Space Grant Program for the Mermaid Park Stream and Habitat Restoration Program. I'm project. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do, uh, we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions or comments on the motion? And I guess my question would be, um, if we make this application, when would we hear back whether we're successful or not?
You want to take it, Ben?
Yeah. Uh, so for, uh, Pico, they have a, a pretty quick turnaround. So what is it? We probably hear by the end of the year. So well before we, you know, we undertake the, uh, the, the digging and the actual physical work, we'll most likely be in the design phase.
Okay. Good deal. All right. So, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Please record a unanimous vote.
Uh, that concludes my, my reports, Mr. President.
Commissioner Graham. So next we will hear from our Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin, a quick question for Commissioner Graham. What was the date of the follow-up meeting?
Uh, September the sixteenth at seven P M.
Okay. So it's the sixteenth?
Yes. It will be carried via Zoom. Um, if you check, I, I, I hate to say it, but if you check my Facebook account, the announcement is there.
Okay. For some reason, I thought you said the fifteenth. Okay. I have two items this evening. The first one is for parking regulations. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend Section one of seven dash thirty-two Schedule nine parking prohibited by restricting parking on the north side of Campbell Lane from Elm Avenue to a point sixty-five feet easterly thereof. The parking restriction is necessary in order to allow access by emergency and public works vehicles. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions on the motion? Okay. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please record a unanimous vote.
Next item I have is the announcement for our police officer examination. Please announce that the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities on behalf of their respective civil service commissions and/or municipalities, including the Springfield Township, will be conducting a written examination for entry-level police officers on Saturday, October tenth, two thousand twenty, at Hattborough Horsum High School. Anyone interested in taking the examination should visit www.montcopolicetest.com, where a single unified application will be available to apply to any or all of the twelve police departments participating in the testing process. The online application process will close on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty, at five P M. Participants who achieve a passing score on the written test will be invited to participate in a physical agility test on Saturday, October thirty-first. Women and minority candidates are encouraged to apply. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell.
Mr. President, if I may, uh, before I forget, just to respond to Commissioner Maxwell's, um, request about the next week's town hall, a formal invite will be going out to all of the board members, including, um, Chief, uh, our Chief of Police, Mike Pitco. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Okay, Commissioner Cobb is not here, so I am going to tackle his, uh, his agenda item, and I am going to announce the zoning hearing board for this, this, this month. Uh, we'll be meeting on Monday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty, at seven P M. The meeting will be conducted via the Zoom virtual meeting platform, meeting ID number eight-eight-four-five-five-three-nine-three-three-four-seven to receive testimony on the following applications. And they are case number twenty-dash-zero-nine. This is the application of C. Vic L. P., owner of the property is located at eleven-oh-one through eleven-twenty-one Ivy Hill Road, Windmore, Pennsylvania, one nine zero-three-eight. The properties are also known as Montgomery County Parcel Number five-two-zero-zero-one four-nine-nine-five-zero-zero-one, Parcel Number five-two-zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-five-one-three-six, and Parcel Number five-two-zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-five-one-zero-nine. The applicant seeks a used variance from Section one-one-four-dash-one-twenty-one dot A and a dimensional variance from Section one-one-four-dash-one-three-four dot A of the zoning ordinance of Springfield Township. The dimensional variance is for the required number of onsite parking stalls. The applicant proposes to lease tenant spaces for operation as indoor places of recreations and private instructions. In addition, the ownership group maintains office space for their masonry business. The property currently has twenty-nine off-street parking stalls and fifty-one would-be-required. The property is zoned within the, is it I or, or one? I'm not sure. I?
Industrial.
Industrial of Ward Number Five of Springfield Township. Okay, and then, uh, case number twenty-dash-ten. This is the application of Catherine Doyle and Maureen Alexander, owners of the property located at eighty-three-twenty-one Flower Town Avenue in Windmore, Pennsylvania, one nine zero-three-eight, known as Montgomery County Parcel Number five-two-zero-zero-zero-six-three-two-two-zero-zero-seven. The applicant seek a dimensional variance from, uh, Section one-one-four-dash-one-three-one-dot-C of the zoning ordinance of Springfield Township. The applicant seek approval to construct a carport five feet, six inches from the property line instead of the required seven feet. The proposed carport is a single-story building and will not be enclosed. The property is zoned within the A Residential District of Ward Two of Springfield Township. And then next, we have case number twenty-dash-eleven. This is the application of Marcia Winward, owner of the property located at seventy-seven-zero-five Gate Road, Windmore, Pennsylvania, one nine zero-three-eight, known as the, as Montgomery County Parcel Number five-two-zero-zero-zero-six-nine-six-one-zero-zero-seven. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance from Section one-one-four-dash-sixty-four-dot-C of the zoning ordinance of Springfield Township. The applicant proposes, in addition to the rear of the home, that will encroach ten feet into the rear yard setback area. The required rear yard setback area of twenty-five feet is proposed to be reduced to fifteen feet. The property is zoned within the B Residential District of Ward Number Five of Springfield Township. And then finally, finally, this is, uh, is case number twenty-dash-twelve. This is the application of Jennifer French, owner of the property located at six-zero-four Grace Lane, Flower Town, Pennsylvania, one nine zero-seven-five, known as Montgomery County Parcel Number five-two-zero-zero-zero-seven-six-zero-zero-seven. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance from Section one-one-four-fifty-four dot A of the zoning ordinance of Springfield Township. The applicant proposes, in addition to the front facade of the home, that will encroach eight feet into the required forty-foot front yard setback area. The property is zoned within the A Residential District of Ward Six of Springfield Township. Um, copy of the application and plan are on file with the Code Enforcement Office and may be viewed during normal business hours. And, uh, any questions you may have can, can be directed to the Director of Planning and Zoning at two-on-five-eight-three-six-seventy-six-hundred, extension one-one-four, at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Copies of the applications and plans are on file. I guess that's redundant, so I won't say that again. Okay, so that ends my report, and let's see here. So finally, we'll move on to, uh, Commissioner Lee, the Chairman of Public Works and Facilities Committee.
Sorry, you can't hear me right. It will zoom again. Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items, uh, this evening. First Resolution number fifteen oh-four. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number fifteen oh-four, authorizing the appropriate township officials to execute an agreement, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, for Springfield Township to provide winter maintenance on specified state highways within Springfield Township. Term of the agreement is five years, provides reimbursement to Springfield Township at a rate of one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seven cents per lane mile in the first year, increasing to one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents per lane mile in the final year. That is my motion.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Okay. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Second item relates to the tank car property. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an additional services agreement with B. L. Companies, Inc., to perform additional Act Two site assessment tasks as outlined in their proposal dated December twentieth, two thousand nineteen. The cost of the work is valued at one hundred and thirty-six thousand and six hundred dollars, for which the township has recently obtained a grant in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Industrial Site Reuse Program. Value of the grant is one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, and will require a local match in the amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. That is my motion. and will require a local match in the amount of $34,150. That is my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion?
I have a question, Mr. President. I thought, it was my understanding that we had Act 2 clearances on this site. What, why are we doing additional testing?
No, no, that, this is part of the Act 2 process. We have a work plan that's been approved by DEP, but that work plan requires additional site assessment activities, which is the scope of this contract.
I thought when we, I thought when we purchased the property, we had the assurance from the EPA and others that the site was, was clean, ready to go.
You got a comfort letter from EPA that said that they would not hold you to additional cleanup beyond what would have been done, but they required you to go through the Act 2, subject to us going through and completing the Act 2 process required by DEP.
So, so we never received Act 2.
We never. No, that's part of the process.
Okay, I mean, I've been through commercial Act 2 clearances here. I have never seen as an extent, a requirement for as extensive a testing as this, that this is, this, this proposal outlines. Has our attorney seen this?
Our environmental attorney has seen this.
And he's okay with it?
Absolutely.
If I can.
This was shared with the board back in February when we applied for the, the grant to complete this work.
Yeah, but I don't think we understood the full extent of the testing at that point in time.
Michael, can I comment briefly?
This is testing, this is, this is, this is testing, in my opinion, that's absolutely going to find other problems on this site. No question about it. And then where are we?
Well, I can tell, well, but if you refer back to February, Pete, there's going to be a second grant that we applied for, which is an actual remediation grant to address anything that's uncovered. One of those things that could be uncovered is, and we anticipate it, is there's going to be asbestos materials in the buildings that are going to have to be remediated.
Yeah, I don't, I don't object to the asbestos testing because I was, I don't think that was ever done in the prior testing. But, you know, you're putting down, you know, 10 new deep wells on the site. It's, it's going to be, it's, I think it's going to be problematic, but I guess time will tell.
Mike, can I comment briefly? Just to, we, we got our Act 2 plan approved when we bought the property. That plan required, required the work that we're doing, that we're authorizing tonight.
At, at this level, at this level?
Yeah. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. I've never seen, I've, I've never seen an Act 2 clearance with this kind of requirements.
Was anything done on a brown, a brownfield site that you were involved in?
Oh, yeah, sure. Absolutely. We built an apartment building on top of a brownfield site.
It's because it's public property. That's.
Because it's public property to be used for recreation and we don't have any Act 2 clearance. We don't get an Act 2 clearance until everything in our Act 2 plan has been finished and completed to the satisfaction of DEP. That then and only then will we get an Act 2 clearance.
Okay. I mean, my understanding of Act 2 is basically, you know, don't disturb, don't, don't disturb the encapsulated area. You know, you've, you've tested, you know there's stuff down there. You, you, you take the real bad stuff out, you put the new dirt in, you encapsulate the entire area. And then the Act 2 says basically, you can't dig in it, you can't, you know, you can't do anything except basically, you know, cover it with grass or landscaping and look at it or play on it or.
That's, Commissioner Wilson, if I can just explain, that's not exactly what Act 2 is. Every Act 2 plan is completely different. And what you just described might be a plan. And maybe DEP approves that, or maybe they don't, but, but I, it's my understanding in this case that DEP wanted additional testing to be done to make, to make sure that the contaminants were not moving off-site. And that is the primary reason for why we have to do this additional testing. But they will not give us an Act 2 clearance until they, number one, approve our plan and number two, we do everything on the plan. And one of the things we have to do is this testing.
So, so if this testing turns up, you know, significant concerns or problems, we may never get a clearance and, you know, or we're, or we'll be forced to, you know, re-remediate the site.
That, that, I can't tell you, that's impossible. That is possible. Yes, sir.
Okay, just as long as everybody understands that's the deal.
It doesn't sound like we have a lot of alternatives here, so.
Not if we want an Act 2 clearance.
Okay. So, Paul, for a vote, then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, say nay? No nays? Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay. So I believe that concludes our committee reports and I will then go back to our, I will now open the board, the board will now open, be open to comments or questions from the public. And so let's see, any, any hands up? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting then.
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so moved, court, court. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.